Here we go. Good evening, it's six o'clock and welcome to the Findlay City Council Meeting of September 2nd, 2025. We will start this evening's meeting with the roll call.
Mr. Ballman?
Here.
Mr. DeArment?
Here.
Ms. Frishy?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
And Mr. Wobser?
Present.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a quick moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now accept a motion to approve this changes, I'm sorry. Yeah, the public hearing minutes and the city council minutes and the special meeting minutes. Mr. Palmer? Second, Mr. Ballman. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the acceptance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay, they are accepted. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons or to the agenda tonight? No? All right, Mr. Feigner would like to speak to an issue on those.
In your packet, there's ordinance 2025-109 up for first reading, no emergency language. If you find that, it's an amended ordinance, so the style to which we've normally done that is to retype the way it is currently in existence, which had a typo. That same typo made it in to the amended language in that ordinance. This is Street 51.03A6, where you see a list of numerical things. Number six has the word "or" that will change to "of," that will be corrected for the next meeting. Both in the old part of that ordinance and in the proposed amended part, the number's the same, A6. "Or" will become "of."
Okay, thank you. We have no proclamations, recognition, or retirement resolutions, we have no petitions. We have four oral communications that will fall under the farm animals discussion, written communications.
An email from Edith Wannamaker regarding Lake Cascades and Western Avenue intersection.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
An email from Melissa Soto regarding farm animals.
Questions or comments? Mr. Niemeyer?
I'd like to have this read into the minutes.
Second, Ms. Frishy. All in favor of having it read into the record, say aye. Any opposed nay?
Nay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a roll call.
Mr. Ballman?
Nay.
Mr. DeArment?
Nay.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Nay.
Ms. Warnicki?
Nay.
And Mr. Wobser?
Nay.
Three in favor.
Okay.
Can I?
Letter to be filed. Ms. Frishy, do you have other comments to this?
What, what?
Other comments to this?
Yeah, I was just, when he made that, my thought was, it sounds like we're gonna be sending chickens to a committee for all of council, and I was gonna say, can we refer that to that committee? Just for their, their records.
That'll be brought up under the committee report and you can bring that at that time, thank you. We have no utility or contractor communications tonight, reported municipal officers and departments.
Findlay Municipal Court Activities Report for July 2025.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Officer/Shareholders Disclosure Form from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control for 786 Investments Group Incorporated, located at 1831 Fostoria Avenue, for a C1 liquor permit.
Mr. Palmer?
Move that no objection be filed.
Second, Mr. Ballman. Any discussion? All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? We will not file an objection.
Traffic Commission Minutes for August 18th, 2025.
Minutes to be filed.
A letter from City Engineer Calb regarding floodplain stormwater regulations upgrade, project number 35512700.
Letter to be filed.
A letter from Director of Law Feigner regarding agreement for indigent defense services.
Ms. Frishy?
When you talked about the funds are coming, you talked about Heather Eigel and the fund. Where was, where was I looking in here to understand how that money works? Like, is it, we've always gotten that? And it's plenty and we just haven't been paying for inmates for a long time? Or this is new this year?
No, this is, this has been around for more than my 26-year career. The city has some skin in the game on providing the public defender's office as the county does. County funds are based on state cases and the city's is for public defenders on defending city cases that our police department charges folks, has nothing to do with inmates, it's defendants, so to speak.
I thought it was together, okay.
Yeah, and so it's always been in place and the city's required to fund the public defender's office. And the purpose of this, and I met with Heather Eigel on this, is to always ensure that there is funding in place for the public defender's office. So, our mathematical, if there was no funding coming from Columbus, would be that $95,000 per year for three years. However, we have always received a large amount of reimbursement and for fiscal year 2026, that's gonna be 82%. So, for instance, we've received, she gave me an example of a $20,000 invoice that ended up costing us $200, because the folks down in Columbus picked up and reimbursed us for that.
So, it's per case?
It's, it's a, it's a calculation per case, they have to report it, there's a paper trail of it, and it's $95,000 per year in this going forward, new proposed agreement, and it was last time, hasn't gone up, so what we've always done. How far back it goes in those numbers, I don't know, could certainly find those. But obviously, we wanna have, people have the right to have a defense counsel or otherwise indigent, and this is how it's funded. So, the state really is picking up the tab, but we gotta be there in case.
Other questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding FDY Airport Master Plan, project number 35243500.
Questions or comment? Mr. Russell?
Jeremy, can you speak to what the airport master plan is? What it will entail, what we expect to get out of it, et cetera? And also about the timeliness of this ordinance?
Yeah, so, so I'll try to keep this short, but pretty much a master plan for the airport. Per the FAA, we have to do one. Last one we did was about 20 years ago and we have actually fulfilled everything that was on that master plan. What that, what it is doing is it's a comprehensive plan for any future development, any facility upgrades, anything that we can think that is gonna happen in the next 20 years on the airport, we need to have on that plan. That's gonna give us a capital plan for the next 20 years on what we're gonna be doing. Pretty much, if, if we don't have a project or we don't have any kind of that stuff on the plan that is approved by the FAA, then it's not eligible for any FAA funding. So, we need to think about, you know, is there, do we need extra electricity out there for future, you know, mobile type stuff or electric, no, I can't think of it. Joby and stuff like that, do we need to have there? So, we gotta show areas on the plan that, you know, this is a possible location. So, once that's on there, then if there's grant funding out there through the FAA, then we can start grabbing that kinda stuff. So, pretty much, in order for us to keep receiving funding from the FAA and ODIE and for us to enable to keep doing projects on there, we need to continue with our master plan on that. So, this is not gonna be just one of those where we check the box and then the book gets put in the bookcase and we don't see it again for another 20 years. We actually, with a lot of ours, we use these and this is how we have our capital plan going forwards. We went through the process of getting a consultant for that. We have CNS companies on that, that's a third-party consultant that we are using. Talking with them, it's gonna be about a 12 to 18-month process. There's a lot of talking we gotta do with different groups that are involved with the airport, economic development, the state and stuff like that, just to see what the next 20 years could look like and how the airport can be impacted by a lot of that stuff. So, right now, we have, the appropriation I'm doing right now is the grant funds that we've received from the FAA. So, they approved everything on that, we received the grant funds, they're paying for 95% of that, we only have a 5% match. So, really, right now, the master plan is on hold until the funds are appropriated and to move forwards.
Mr. Russell?
So, then there is a local input into this, is that, is that the general aviation community and economic development and corporate, or?
So, yeah, it's, it, there's gonna be a pretty wide reach of that on the local side. You're gonna have your general aviation that is using it, the corporate that is using that, but then you also gotta think about, okay, maybe they're not just using the airport to fly planes in and out of, how are they gonna use any kind of possible land around there? You know, is there a development opportunity within that area that they could use through-the-fence opportunities for that? So, you gotta think about that, just not how they fly in and out of it, of using it, but how the land around it could have an impact on what the airport, how it acts throughout there. So, a lot of those, like Joby and stuff, they're going down to different airports and they're actually having through-the-fence agreements through that, where they're actually building off-site, but they have access onto the taxiways and stuff. But they may not actually be finding planes out of there, but they have through there, so that way they can be, you know, make ready type stuff. So, that's, you're gonna be getting a lot of that and then also, we'll be talking with a lot of state leaderships on that through economic development, Jobs, Ohio. I got a blank on it, but, and then, you know, with the FAA too, thinking about federal and stuff on what kinda guidelines are gonna be come through and how it impacts us.
Mr. Hellman?
Rob, just out of curiosity, does that also include technology?
What's that?
Does that also include technology?
Yeah, yeah, so any kind of technology upgrades that we have of that, you know, a small part of this is, you know, are we gonna build more hangars? We may, we may not, but we gotta make sure we have shown on our plan, if we ever build hangars in the next 20 years, we gotta have that shown of where the possible location would be going for that. Any kind of technology upgrades, if it's for electricity or any kinda different fuel that's being used on where are we gonna put these areas if it's developed in the next 20 years? So, a lot of looking past the next 10 years, you know, you're, there's a lot of stuff we're gonna have to make assumptions on, on what it is, but you gotta have all that stuff on there. So, when funding does come out, we can show, hey, we had a plan, we have an area where this stuff can go, this is why we're going after those grant funds.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
And so then the expectation for completion of this is at the earliest Q4, '26? And maybe at the latest, sometime in Q2, Q3, '27? Is that the timeframe?
Correct, yeah, yep.
And then, once we, once we get it, then do we, does the city then start working on executing the, the plans or does this, does it then like work its way into our capital, 10-year capital plan, things like that?
So, both. It would be in the capital plan, so a lot of the airport projects that you see we have in the capital plan are part of the previous airport capital planning, so we'll be incorporating those within. But then that also sets, you know, kinda paints the path for when we're dealing with FAA on, we have a runway project that are coming up and stuff like that. They kinda are, they approve our master plan, they see that stuff coming up, so that kinda helps us with our grant funds as well.
Ms. Frishy?
Jeremy, with the, when did we finish our 20-year plan? I'm just curious on that one, like, you said we just finished that plan, it's, or it's been done for a while?
It, this, so this year is pretty much where wrapping up what the previous one was.
So, we'll be completely done with whatever's left on that list at the end of this year?
Correct.
Is there possibility of making that airport for larger planes and such? And if so, are we gonna include those neighborhoods in any of the discussion?
Mayor?
Well, the runways, the runways themselves can hold very large planes, so we wouldn't need to make extensive changes to the runways. There will be a public engagement process, and again, depending on the layout of what we think would happen in there, then we would engage different neighbors. But there, I believe as part of the process, beyond this targeted stakeholder engagement, then there will also be a public feedback process.
And then, like, let's say you were talking, we have to get it on the map. Let's say we put storage buildings, warehousing here, but we decide 10 years later, there's a different op- are they, do there's the flexibility to move that or you're stuck?
No, you're, you're not just stuck and like, you know, cause like I said, in the next 20 years, a lot, a lot of stuff could happen. So, as long as you have it on there and then you go back and you give an update to the FAA of like, hey, we've actually moved it here. And then kinda going back with the, you know, the neighborhoods and the properties and stuff like that. That's not saying just cause it's on the plan that, you know, say the property just to the south or to the east or something like that, to the airport, is, hey, that's where a future development is going. But if you don't have that identified on there as a possibility, then if it's not on there, it could never happen. So, it's kinda one of those, you gotta show it could be a possibility, but not saying that, you know, something's already gonna go there, but it's just always keeping ourselves available for the grant funding that could be coming out there if something does happen to go there.
Mr. Russell?
Does the creation of the plan, do we get it from the consultant and, and a year, a year and a half? And then it goes to the FAA for approval or is that kind of an iterative process between the consultant and the FAA? So, what, the consultant creates, the FAA, we know they will approve?
Yeah, so it, we pretty much are working hand-to-hand with them on a lot of that stuff. So, that 12 to 18 month is pretty much, at the longest, it should be 18 months, we'll have a full plan. It all depends on how long it takes. With, with FAA approval, that's what I mean. So, that's why it's 12 to 18 months, you never know how fast they're gonna work. You know, we, we could have our draft plan pretty much done in, let's say, 10 months, but then going through the approval process with them. So, that 12 to 18 month is, is pretty much, we're gonna have a full adopted plan by the FAA and they're approving it as well.
Mayor?
I just wanna take this as an opportunity to give our airport team a shout-out, because Amanda and Kyle, old Kyle and new Kyle, their both named Kyle, both did a great job of, you know, they're talking to the FAA regularly and building those relationships, not just with, you know, the other kind of operational individuals, but those capital planning. And as I've stated in the past, Amanda was the president of the Ohio Aviation Association. So, we're, we're talking about the Findlay Airport frequently and we bring up folks from Jobs, Ohio and different key entities to have discussions regularly about what are the opportunities? What makes sense for us? What does the long-term planning look at like?
Mr. Stajcik?
In the spirit of coming into the budget season as we are too, I think this is a good opportunity for the administration when they are soliciting input from economic development and some of these other organizations to do a full overview for us and a full presentation. Not only for you folks that are sitting here still through the end of the year, but if that happens into next year, so everybody has a general idea, because it is so comprehensive and we have benefited quite a bit. And every now and then, other communities don't have the match. And so, they'll step up our projects, or like in one case, they had a bunch of extra asphalt from a project and they brought that asphalt to us to expand certain sections of our airport that we knew we were gonna expand runway or pavement. So, there's a lot of opportunity there, but the more understanding and overview that the new folks coming in have, the better off it's gonna be, because there's a lot of money. This is our largest area of grant dollars over the decades that I've been here.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding FDY Airport DBE Plan, project number 35253800.
Mr. Russell?
And Jeremy, does the DBE plan, is that done at the same time as the, as the master plan? Or are they, they're two totally separate things?
Two totally separate things. Every four to five years, we have to update our DBE plan. Pretty much what that is doing is any of our construction projects that have any federal or state funds tied to it, we gotta list a DB, which is disadvantaged enterprise, or disadvantaged business enterprise, so woman-owned, minority-owned, or anything like that. We have to have a certain percentage of our projects go towards those subcontractors for that. And that's a federal and state requirement, we do that on ODOT, Jobs and stuff too. So, this isn't anything new, but since the airport's a little bit different than ODOT, Jobs and stuff like that, we have to do our own airport plan. Right now, we are fronting the money, but this will be in a future grant, will be reimbursable through the FAA.
Mr. Russell?
But this is something that we will create internally?
Yeah, so we, so working with our on-call consultant, which is RSNH, they will be updating that. So, we have an airport consultant that strictly does all our airport grants and all our airport requirements. They'll be updating our plan to what is needed for that.
Mr. Russell?
Whereas the master plan, we have a lot of FAA money sitting there, ready to get put to use. This is all ours, is there an advantage to having these both go tonight? Or, I mean, I think personally, I think that, and I'll make a motion that we suspend readings for the master plan.
The, so the FAA is, I mean, I, the master plan is pretty much we're sitting and waiting. I mean, just for the money to be approved. The DBE plan is a requirement, we have to do it. I think it can go one more reading and I'd be fine with that. You know, if I had to pick between the two, the master plan, but we, we gotta do the DB, it's a requirement through the FAA, they're gonna tell us we have to do it. So, that's another one, you know, we're just waiting for the funds to be approved to complete that as well.
Ms. Frishy?
Mayor, does Jobs, Ohio Economic Development Local, is there a plan floating out there for future? Like, what, I know we, there was some conversation about putting a business park out that direction. Is there something that maybe could be presented to council to have a feel of what's happening for the next 20 years that we're, just to have a feel for it?
Not at this point in time, no. We see that as an opportunity, but there's nothing specific.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Project Hat Trick, project number 35631500, County Road 212 and Township Road 230, water line replacement.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Fire Department Pickup Replacement.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Annual Community Park Improvement Program Grant. This requires council's verbal approval.
Mr. Russell?
Cause this is something we see annually and working in coordination with the Park District, which is greatly appreciated, I would move that council voice its support for the projects listed for the Annual Community Park Improvement Program.
Second, Mr. Wobser. All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? You have our approval. Or their approval. Ms. Frishy?
Just a question, a couple people asked me, the walking paths at Riverside, are they gonna get widened at all? Or will they still be the same? That was just a question I've had.
Maybe in certain areas, but probably not significantly, just given the, some of the trees that we would disturb, so we'll look for opportunities to do that where appropriate, but I don't think we have specific plans to consistently widen them throughout the park.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commissioner, Commission Director Cordania regarding zoning code updates, Farm Animal Ordinance.
Yeah, this'll be brought up. Okay, question for council, we can bring oral communications at this point in time on the agenda or we can wait until the committee report. It's up to you, it's gonna be on, it's on there both times. I don't, any, let's get it over with? It sounds like good to me. Okay, so first tonight to speak on this issue is Melissa Humphris. Melissa, I thought I saw you here. And she would like to talk about the Farm Animal Ordinance. Let me make sure the red light is on, yep, thank you.
I wanna thank you all for letting me speak tonight. My name is Melissa Mathias Humphris and I have lived at 915 East Nuskee Street in Findlay, Ohio since 2009, where I have responsibly kept horses on my property since 1966, when my parents purchased- when my parents purchased the property, and I've had chickens since 2014. This is my homestead. I am writing to strongly oppose any ordinance that would require me to register, count, or obtain a permit for the animals I have legally and peaceably maintained on my private property for decades. This proposal infringes on my longstanding property rights, undermines Ohio law, and imposes unnecessary burdens on citizens who have never posed any risk to the public. Under Ohio Revised Code 713.15, property owners are entitled to continue lawful uses of their land that predate zoning changes. This is referred to as quote-unquote "non-conforming use", and it is protected by state law. I have kept horses on this land continuously for nearly 60 years, and chickens for over a decade, well before any discussion of new restrictions or permit systems. By requiring me to now quote-unquote "register" my animals or seek city permission, the ordinance is attempting to regulate a lawful grandfathered use, which the courts have repeatedly held to be improper unless a clear and compelling public interest is proven. There is no public nuisance, safety issue, or health risk associated with the way I keep my animals. There have been no citations and no evidence of harm. This is not about public safety, it's about bureaucratic overreach. In Litva v. Village of Richmond, the court upheld limited animal ordinances but recognized that longstanding animal ownership must be respected and cannot be wiped out by new regulations. And in the city of Seville versus Converse, a vague ordinance was struck down for failing to give residents fair notice of what was and wasn't allowed. Ohio's constitution guarantees that citizens have the unalienable right to acquire, possess, and protect property. These protections are not symbolic, but are intended to prevent exactly this kind of retroactive interference by government. I pay taxes on this land. I care for my animals with dignity and responsibility. No government agency should have the authority to make me ask permission for what I've lawfully done for half a century. Let me be clear, I will not voluntarily register or seek a permit for the animals I rightfully kept on my own land. Doing so would imply that I accept the city's authority to regulate what is, it has no legal or moral claim over. I am not asking for special exemption. I'm asking that the city of Finley respect the law, honor the rights of its residents, and reconsider the unnecessary and intrusive direction this ordinance is heading.
Questions for Ms. Humphris. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Miller. Lisa, I've not seen you speak before, but you have four minutes. I'll raise this up at about 3:45.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
My name is Lisa Miller. I own a business in town and have lived in town since 2002 within the city limits. Raised two children here, they're adults now. And I don't know why y'all don't want to hear what Melissa had to say. Melissa's gist of her letter was that the people in the city, this is an agricultural community, you owe everything to agriculture. Everything we have is based on agriculture, except for maybe marathon and their, whatever you let them do. And the people in the city should have the right to have their children learn responsibility and raise farm animals and go to the fair and have 4H animals just like people outside of the city, because otherwise you're treating people disparately. I believe this ordinance, in its conception, is unconstitutional because it regulates a certain class of property owner, not the wolfing dogs all over my neighborhood that nobody seems to care about, okay? But one segment, not reptiles, but farm animals. Not all animals, farm animals. That's disparate, okay? Ms. Frish points out, it's really chickens. So your interest would be regulated to that. Mr. Russell, in his response to Ms. Soto, points out it's overwhelmingly roosters. So your interest in the ordinance, your interest in what's on my property or Melissa's property or this woman's property would be regulated to roosters, not farm animals, not chickens, dogs, no, roosters. Your complaint of your citizens is roosters. So your ordinance should be curtailed to that, okay? And then you want to trespass on my property, the most offensive thing to me of all, okay? Ridiculous, unlawful. We live in the United States of America. That is my kingdom. That piece of property is mine. You have to have my permission to come there, and I would never give up that right, okay? And then you want to say you want to come on my property for safety of my animals. These are people who are proposing to put animal feces in covered containers, methane in covered containers, and you want to talk to me about safety? I don't think you're qualified, because that would be like, who's going to take care of those methane explosions that occur all over the city? Because you're putting chicken poop in a covered container. Not, I don't know how we got here, but this, I do know what the city of Finley and you all to turn into HOA, because I want to decide what happens on my property. I want to paint my house my color, whatever color I want, and I don't want you all deciding that, because I don't think you should in this country. Thank you very much for your time.
Questions for her? Thank you, Lisa. We have Sarah. Did you, Sarah, where's Sarah at? Do you want to speak to this? I know you were a little...
Well, I didn't know.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't want to miss the opportunity.
All right. Sarah Pugh.
What he was referring was, I said, if we decided to table this and not go through with it, I didn't have to speak. But I feel like I'm a little scared for what might happen. My time's not started yet, right?
It just started.
Oh, no, I need four minutes. Hello, council and esteemed administration. Pugh. I wanted to take the opportunity to...
Sarah, just a second. Let's start over.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I need all four minutes.
Introduce yourself, tell us where you live, and then I'll start the clock.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Pugh, I live at 433 Eben Avenue, Ward 4. Hello, council and esteemed administration. I wanted to take the opportunity today to discuss a suggestion the zoning and planning committee proposed to be talked about by council. Director Matt Cordanié, sorry, was appointed to his position, although I can't find an exact date. I know it's more recent than the last farm animal discussion, and it was brought back to the farm animals again after public opinions had already differed, and it was taken off the council table two years ago. I want to start off by saying I am one of the citizens that will be affected by this if it becomes more than just discussion. I'm sorry, my voice is also hoarse from fair. This week was fair week. It was our first year as 4H members. We have had chickens for five years now, and it was one of the best decisions that we ever made during COVID. When all of the grocery stores shut down and everything closed, we had bought two laying hens with a big coop a couple months prior. At this time, this also included my 625-foot square garden that included corn, tomatoes, peppers, and countless other nutritionally valued goods. We had our start to our micro homestead with receiving eggs every morning and other garden food coming close behind. My family and I have spent countless hours and numerous months filled with hard manual labor that allows my husband and I to show and teach our homeschooled kids the value of hard work and being grateful for reaping what they sow, literally. I decided to homeschool for numerous reasons, but something I can't shake is the fact that I myself graduated from Finley High School, and I can't remember a single time 4H was offered or even explained. Until this year, I actually thought it was for people, excuse me, only living in the country. When I signed my two sons up for this amazing life lesson opportunity, I truly had no idea the effect education and opportunities that would be offered to my kids. As I said, we had chickens for years, but when we decided to show them, it opened up another world of exploration for us. On Thursday morning, I went to the gas station to buy a paper, not realizing that the courier was free and offered in one of the merchant buildings, which is kind of amazing, to learn about why my kids weren't going to be featured in the newspaper. I was met with the decision on the front page of the Planning and Zoning Committee voting 5-0 after a recommendation from the director, and I had actually came to the meeting on Wednesday, and I was prepared to speak, but I was called back to the judging classes because they moved too quickly and my sons were presenting for the first time, and I couldn't miss that, obviously. My oldest son read the paper later that day at the fair, and immediate tears and sobs started as he questioned, Mom, are they going to make me get rid of our chickens? I love baby, brownie, Luna, Nugget, Jessica, Peckers, and Buttercup. Yes, we named them all. Just this past week, I received a phone call from our cousin telling us their son was at Tractor Supply, and the workers there gave him two ducks, food, bedding included. He couldn't have them. Did we want them? Immediately, yes. Duck eggs are incredibly nutritious and get along with chickens. So my questions are as follows. Do we have formal written complaints about farm animals exclusively, or is it just roosters? Why is this getting put on the table again and again? Is this grandfathering a discussion or a permanent fixture? How many constituents in your districts have you talked to? Where is the suggestion registering indoor/outdoor cats? Next year, we are getting meat chickens to raise and show in 4H. Not only is this another learning opportunity, but my son has the potential to earn thousands of dollars for selling his livestock that he worked so hard all year for. We will not have them until July, pass the cutoff to have registered birds, and we also want 30, because it will get us through winter. This is over the allotment. As far as registering them, I have had multiple people break into my home, and the city of Finley has not concluded who that was, so people coming onto my property against my will is not something I'm okay with. Lastly, our chickens serve their purpose, and our older girls have lived good lives after we bought them until they expired. We have gotten a couple new birds each year, some pass away. This isn't protected under your grandfathered rights. All right, there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions? Mr. Wobser.
Sarah, thanks for your comments. Let's get to the important stuff. How did your son place at the show?
First time he placed a fifth, two sixth, and got an outstanding award. Thank you. What was his name? Bryson.
Other questions? Mr. Niemer.
I was going to make a motion to leave her finish if she's not done.
Honestly, I, no, I'm going to admit, it's fine. Thank you, I very much appreciate that, but I think I said everything.
Ms. Frishy.
Does the committee have any of those answers? Have we had complaints? Are you guys going off of a list? I've visited plenty of chicken facilities over the last couple years of discussion. They're all very clean, they're all very quiet. Lisa mentioned roosters are the problem. There's city ordinance for noise that should address that, but do we have, I mean, what are the complaints you're getting that you guys have this in committee?
Mr. Russell.
Sarah, thanks for coming in. I tell your son, he's not going to lose his chickens. That's not the intent of the legislation that is under discussion, especially for the folks like yourself that have, do this and do this in a respectful manner for their neighbors. We have had one situation that I can think of where a farmyard animal, it actually was a business, was the orders were so bad that the neighbor was unable to live in her house and, in essence, unable to sell it. And the only avenue, she had two avenues, one was a civil, was civil suit against the neighbor, and, but instead, the law director went and shut down the, because the neighbor was running a business involving the slaughtering of farm animals. So in that situation, from that order standpoint, simply because he was running a business, gave relief for the neighbor so that she could live in and enjoy her house. And that is a situation, that's just an example of a situation that you're trying to, that we're trying to ensure that neighbors have, that neighbors can enjoy their properties in the situations where there are farmyard animal owners who are not like you, who do not keep their animals in a clean and healthy manner. And that's the intent of this. It's not to take away your son's chickens or ducks or anything.
That, I understand that, but the fact remains that it will take them away, though. I mean, if you have an ordinance for 10 chickens, yes, that does take it away. And if you only grandfather the ones that I register, that does, if every year, like I said, I'm getting four new ones.
They don't grandfather the specific chickens. They grandfather a count so that you can have, you can have that number, and then it also sticks with your, the grandfathering sticks with your property, so that if you build an infrastructure to have chickens and you want to move, a new person can move into your house and continue to enjoy what, the ability of your property to host chickens.
Is it going to have the classified difference between my laying hens and my meat chickens? And also meat chicken, there was nothing classified, like I said, we're getting 30 meat chickens, because that's how many we need to last through the winter.
That's part of, that's part of the reason why I think the committee wanted to have discussions. Part of this is that there would be, I recommend a public input part of this process. But we came, there's no legislation in front of council today because the committee said we wanted to have, get input from the other members of council as to where they stood on this and kind of get their input. This is an evolving thing, an evolving thing. And of the folks that I know who are raised, or have farmyard animals, and I believe Tom's going to speak to us next, you know, the majority of them, or the ones I know, do so very respectfully, and they're not my, they're not my concern, and I don't think they're anybody in council's concerns. It's always, it's always the ones that, it's always the ones that aren't, that don't do it in that, in a manner that you or Tom does. And this simply gives, gives, so that this gives the city a tool to address it, so that the only tool available to a aggrieved neighbor is, isn't just civilly. And that's the, that's the gist of where, why this is coming and what's being proposed.
I do understand that. Is there a smell ordinance in Finley? Well, then, I mean, that kind of solves the question for the slaughter business, I would assume, if that's what's preventing her from needing to sell. And how old is that? Is that current?
That case?
Yeah.
No, the business was shut down.
So what's the current problem with the chicken? I mean, what's the current, because you named something that's not current. So what's the current?
Sarah, let me, some of the other council one side. Mr. Wobser.
Sarah, again, thanks for your comments, and using the situation that Councilman Russell brought up, let's say it wasn't a business. There's just somebody who had a lot of chickens or whatever, farm animals, don't care what they are, quite frankly, and they weren't doing a very good job. And now they are affecting other people around them, and their property values are going down because it, makes sense, right?
Absolutely.
So what would you suggest? And by the way, I think...
I don't live in theoreticals. I live in, that's why I asked for current situations and current complaints.
But when laws are made, they go on forever until they're taken out. So you have to deal with theoreticals, because it could happen down the road.
But you're limiting me with a theoretical.
The theoretical is, right now, the laws allow you to have whatever you want on your property. So my question to you, and it would have been to Lisa and Melissa, what do you say to the people that can't sell their property because of somebody else's use of farm animals when they have as much right also? I'm just, I'm trying in the middle of this thing, I'm trying to understand where you would come down in that situation.
I mean, I would, first off, what is the prohibiting of being able to sell it? Is it the smell, so you can actually claim that?
Sure, you live next to somebody that's raising pigs.
The noise, you can file, I mean, all of the problems, you can file a complaint with...
But if it wasn't a business, we couldn't have taken care of this situation?
If it wasn't a business, you couldn't have taken care of it?
Correct. There's no way to do that. So my question to you before, Councilman Frishy, I appreciate it, but what do we, what do we say to that person? What do we, how do we help them out?
I mean, you knock on their door, first off, and ask if they need any assistance. I mean, that would be nice, because sometimes people have health issues.
And they say, don't come on my property.
And then we can address it from there, right? So, I mean, I guess, I don't know, because I don't like to live in theoreticals.
There you go, and that's the rub. And I get it. I understand exactly where you're coming from and where Lisa and Melissa are coming from, understand it completely. But that's only one side of the coin, and we have to deal with all sides of the coin. So that's all we're trying to find, get the information here. So I appreciate you trying to answer the question, it was good.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I was going to answer as quick.
Ms. Frishy.
So I think you got a lot of answers just now. I think these were the statements I needed to hear, Grant and Jeff and so forth. You know, neighborhoods have issues, and like Grant said, people can file a civil case. If you're having... If you're having a problem with your neighbor because their dogs are barking, their chickens are clucking, if their poop is smelling, if they don't pick up their dog poop, if their kids, you know, there's so many things. Those are civil matters. And when the city of Finley has learned multiple times over the last 10 years of me being on council that when we go and we put an ordinance in place, it becomes a weapon. So we allow one neighbor to have a weapon against another neighbor, and then that causes the problem. And unfortunately, when we are looking at doing these types of zoning things, like I said before, we don't have the chicken poop police. They're not gonna come to your house every week and measure. We don't do that. We are reactive. And we have one officer who runs the neat department, and he's gonna respond to complaints. If your neighbor's not complaining, as Grant said, he's not going after you, the nice person, but he feels there's people that aren't nice. And Jeff talks about, "What about your neighbor? You're depreciating their property," or this or that. But if there is a smell issue, if there, you know, if somebody has dogs and they don't have permits, the dog warden comes in. If there's a smell issue, a health concern, the health department comes in. There are things in place. There's noise ordinances. And the reason this keeps coming up and going nowhere is because it's a very dicey topic. I've even talked to people who have emotional support chickens. And I mean, I laugh when I say it, but they really do. And it works for them instead of having a dog or a cat or a reptile or whatever it might be. I think if we're addressing the only concern about a business, and we took care of that a while ago, I didn't hear Grant or anybody in the committee mention anything current. I don't know why we're here with it. I won't support anything with it at this point. But that's where we're at. So I just wanted you to understand, this is a weaponizing piece of material, and I just don't support it.
Mr. Baumann?
I guess maybe the other members of the committee could help me remember. But I believe Eric, when he was with us last week, indicated five to six complaints a week. Does that sound familiar to the rest of the committee? In terms of the noise complaints that they get for, say, roosters, et cetera?
I thought it was two.
Is there an area where that occurs more, like over the, by the fair area or something?
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next speaker after the mayor. Mayor?
Just a couple of quick items. Again, yes, this is a discussion process. That's why there's not formal legislation, is to get feedback. Two, we also have consulted multiple different entities. A long time ago, when this first came up, I met with Dave Thomas and Ed Lentz. And we have also consulted Ed Lentz, because it is a balance, right? We live in a city which has much smaller parcels and tighter landmass with the buildings than in the farms or in the country. And so trying to find that balance of impact to neighbors while also respecting your property. So one of the things that I think we wanted to get from council overall is how can we continue conversation on this topic? And a thought I had while we were here is, would it be helpful? I'm trying to remember which other piece of legislation we did this on. But we could take the legislation and some of the main components and actually do a survey on the different components. So to get feedback on the levels of what should be allowed. I will say that I do, we do have people frequently call my office and say, "Hey, I have this issue." A lot of times, people won't tell us where it is at because they don't want to start something with their neighbor. So it gets a little tricky because we're like, "Well, you need to report it for us to be able to track it." So I think, I'm happy to talk to council on how we can continue conversation and get additional public feedback because I think we want to be able to have a balance to allow folks to, you know, have different food and pets and do 4H. But we also want to make sure that we are setting appropriate parameters to help with neighborhood maintenance.
Thank you, Sarah. Our final speaker tonight is Tom Demuth, who wants to speak on this subject also. Tell us where you live and tell us where you used to work. No. But everybody in the room knows he worked for the city forever, so.
Name's Tom Demuth. I live at 134 Schinkel Street. We have some chickens that are in the 6th Ward downtown here on Front Street along with, there's probably two, maybe three other chicken groups down in there that have chickens. Currently, we have 30 chickens. We have 29 hens and one rooster. Which, under this ordinance, he's gonna be grandfathered. But if we were to start new, you couldn't. You can't have chicks without a rooster if you want to procreate your own group. Most people think you can't have eggs without a rooster, but that's here and there. They say you need one acre. Our lots, we have three lots down there. It is less than one acre that we have on property. An acre is approximately 200 by 220 feet. 44,000 square feet, a little over, a little under 44,000 square feet. If you have to have your rooster 100 feet from your property property lines, that gives you, what? One foot by 20 foot to put your rooster? Some of the square footages, which, I mean, can be changed. It's not set in stone. Some of them square footages that are there are really not correct. Or for chickens, I'm not sure about ducks, rabbits. I'm guessing they're still small and they don't take up a whole lot of room either. Even one acre for a goat is a lot. A goat doesn't need one acre. Two goats don't need one acre. We had a couple councilmen that come down and looked at our property. It's a, you know, less than one acre is a lot of land. There's a lot of area to roam around. Our chickens roam around on that land, but they don't go, they don't cover a quarter acre when they go around there. Like I said, we have 30 chickens that come out there and run around. I think the number, you know, keeping it at 24 and having one animal for every 800 square feet, you could put 30 chickens in less than 400 square feet with the run being 300 and the coop being 100 square feet legally, without even letting them out. So I'm not sure where the 800 square feet per bird comes from. Like I said, it's just numbers that can be changed in any way. I know, I know Councilman Wobson wants to put some teeth in it for the people that are not behaving themselves. I can see that. But I don't know why some of us have to be, you know, the majority has to be punished because we have one guy that doesn't want to follow the rules. I would think we could find something to do with that. Get Edwin, have him look at something, but, "Hey, is this how we're supposed to keep these birds?" Some education on the subject would be something. There's plenty of 4Hers out there that have learned about chickens and could run programs or something like this. And to help the people out that really don't want to, that really don't know much about chickens but want to have chickens and don't really know how to keep chickens. Yep, that's enough for me.
Thank you, Mr. Wobson.
Hey, Tom, I agree with your comments. And I guess, you know, when I think about this, if we were gonna do anything, I'd rather go to the other side of the coin, like you were saying. Let's go after the, let's put some teeth into the law that can go after the people that are causing the problem. Let's not burden the folks that are following the rules, right? Like you are, and your anchor acre, excuse me, your acre and your...
Less than acre.
Less than, sorry, less than an acre and a lot of chickens running around. That's where I would rather go, mayor. When I look at this, is let's put some teeth into the smell, you know, smell, health, noise, so you can go after the bad people and not the good people.
Yeah, most people that have chickens, they want to have healthy chickens. They're expensive. They don't want a bunch of flies around. They're gonna kill their chickens. They don't want to have a bunch of, the more poop and smell that you got around, the more other critters you got around. People that have chickens don't want that. They want healthy chickens. They're expensive.
Mr. Demuth, is there a, thank you for being here, by the way. Is there such a thing as a certification program that maybe 4H puts on, scouting puts on, something like that for somebody who wants to house chickens or ducks or goats or whatever?
I haven't, I haven't looked into the 4H stuff or anything like that. There are programs through different universities, free classes, some classes. Maybe it takes you a week to do them, a few hours, whatever, for education on chickens and how to do it. My partner, she took a class through a university and she actually has a certificate in chicken management, backyard chicken management and stuff like that.
Would that be worthwhile for most chicken owners, do you think? Or is it pretty lame?
I can't tell you the lameness of it. She got a lot out of it. I think it would be, it would be good for the amateur or the novice or new chicken owners to read about. You just don't go out to the farm store and buy six chickens because that's what you can only buy, is six chickens. You can't buy five chickens. You gotta buy six chickens. And you don't even know if they're hens or roosters. You might get home and you have four roosters and two hens. What do you do with the roosters if we can't have roosters? You've heard of Rooster, our rooster today? He's no louder than a, he's not as loud as a dog. The garbage truck's louder than he is.
And just real quick, Boy Scouts, you can get a merit badge in it. That's about all you can do, so. Mayor?
Thank you.
I had something else I was gonna say, but, oh, I remember. I think one thing we have to, one, to all of those that are doing it well, please send us specific recommendations on how we can help set parameters that help keep it nice. Because again, the problem is, is we have limited rules that apply, right? The noxious odors or the noise. But right now, we really don't have anything else with the other complaints that we get. So when we say, "Well, we need to enforce the rules," we don't have any rules. This is a funny example and luckily an easy one. But I had a little girl call my office a couple years ago and she said, "Does the city of Finley allow ponies?" And I said, "Well, yeah, we do, actually." And she, you know, screamed and hung up on me. And a couple minutes later, I got a call from an upset grandmother saying, "Why does the city of Finley allow ponies? I told my granddaughter I'd get her a pony if the city allowed it." And I was like, "Well, ma'am, you may need to check on the ordinances ahead of time, you know. We don't have anything." So luckily, that's, you know, not a big issue. But that's what we're trying to have, is a discussion around it on what makes sense for our community size and for lot, and how do we protect folks? And let's have a conversation around it. And if we can't find something that is both reasonable and protective of our neighborhood as a whole, then we can walk away. But last time, it just kind of died quick because we had other things that we're trying to get done. And it made more sense because we recognized we need to have more conversation around it. So that's what we're trying to have now. So please feel free to send some examples of other communities or how folks are doing it well.
And with Mr. Baumann's question or answer to his question, yes, there were some complaints. And I believe Eric said with a grin during the fair.
Ms. Frishy?
Hey, Rob, Jeff and I just kind of got on the same page again. So if we, is there a way we can strengthen noise and odor through city ordinance beyond what the health department does? Is there anything we can do?
Well, you could look at rewriting your noise ordinance. Right now, it's, when you read it, and I haven't read it in a while, it'd be like when we had problems with some of the bars coming into town and being too loud at certain times at night. But, you know, it's, they're difficult to enforce. What's a bad odor to you isn't a bad odor to me, and on and on. We can go around all day. They're very tough, case by case basis. I would, maybe one way to answer your question, I'm glad to see we haven't had to have a noise issue from some of our establishments a long time because they're very just difficult to prove. That goes back to the woolly bully days, if you remember that. We're going back quite a ways. We could always make an attempt to strengthen them towards, you know, an animal issue, but it's tough.
Okay, at this point in time, I'm, thank you. Yep. At this point in time, I'm going to make a recommendation to council that we form an ad hoc committee, right, to discuss, I'm sorry, I think that was the recommendation. Let me make sure. I'm sorry, a committee of the whole, right, to discuss this issue further. I need the two members to confirm that, and then we will talk about when to do that. If not, this basically is gonna go to an ordinance. And I think you guys want to talk about this some more. Mr. Niemeyer?
Well, I just wanted to say, since I wasn't called on, six Ward councilman, 10, 11 years, no complaints. The only complaints I have from people are dogs and cats. So if we take care of that, then we can do farm animals. It's my opinion. I'm on the, I was on this committee, voted yes because it was over two and a half hours the other day. So when you drive by Tom's place, I urge everybody to do that, twice a week. You'll never see an animal. It's like very close to Dietz's. So all you people, you know, from what I hear, go there frequently, but I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, I had a proposal.
And most people do with farm animals.
I'm sorry, Mr. Niemeyer. I meant to call on you, but I probably forgot.
It's okay.
Yes. All right, so I had a proposal to form a committee to talk about this further. That's up to council then to decide what they want to do.
But there's no ordinance for the chicken.
Nope, not at all.
So there's not an ordinance that's gonna come up?
Talked about it in committee only. Mr. Baumann?
Would like to call a committee of the whole regarding this topic.
I need a second. Mr. Russell? Okay, two of, Mr. Russell?
I'd like discussion on this.
Well, yeah, we can discuss it, but...
It's simple. For the people who are not on the Planning and Zoning Committee, the Planning and Zoning Committee brought us to the council as a whole to get some input as to if the council of the whole thinks this is worth discussing further. And is, because the council, because the P and Z committee is kind of split. And so we're kind of, we're kind of looking for input from the folks who are not on P and Z. And if the best way to do that is a committee of the whole, let's have a committee of the whole meeting. But if the other five say in a no way to this, this is ill-advised, then the P and Z committee takes that input and decides what, where we go next.
Mr. Wobson?
I appreciate those comments. And if that's the goal, then I appreciate the definition or color around that. I am not in favor of this. I don't like the way it's written. I think it would have to go through so many iterations. And by the time we get done, it's gonna be watered down to where we really don't have enough to make it worthwhile. Again, I'd rather go after the people that are doing wrong versus the ones burdening the people that are doing right, understanding that it's a tough sell either way. So in its current form, I would not support it. And if that's what you were looking for, Grant, there's where I stand.
It isn't in a form at this point in time. This is just, this is just kind of the framework. And as for going after them, we have nothing to go after them with. There is no ordinances. And Rob Finer, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe this question was asked to you. You know, why can't we develop something to go after them? And what would you suggest we create? And this was asked of you in the committee, the committee meeting. But I believe you said you would go, you would have something like the ordinance or what we're discussing. Now, Tom brings up really good points that our square footage and numbers not, might not be right. That's the type of input we want. But if your desire is to have something to protect other neighbors, then you need some kind of, in essence, legislation that can be used to... that could be used to, just, just, just to, to be able to knock on a door and say, are you, are you up to these standards?
But what was the penalty, then?
We've, we've never discussed that.
Case, we don't need your comments. You can take them out in the hallway and say whatever you want. Thank you.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Well, the committee meeting I mentioned, and I suggested, Rob, get with the prosecutor, see what the laws are now, see what state laws are, and then, we're gonna hear heat, feedback from him. But this committee report, we just wanted to hear other council people's comments, and I may have to go get my sleeping bag.
So, real quick, I will just, yes, please, let's keep quiet. However, I will note that we did change and increase the penalties for dogs running at large, and we have been enforcing the, the barking on folks, and I know we are looking also at cat ordinance. Nothing has been brought forward, but we do have issues still with people letting their cats out, and adding to our feral cat problem. So, we are paying attention to all of those. I would state, too, I know Matt had shared at the planning and zoning committee, and I know Mr. Feiner just said, too, there is no state law around farm animals. It's jurisdiction by jurisdiction, as a home rule state, communities across, for example, there are sixty different communities across the state of Ohio that we looked at, communities like Upper Sandusky, Marion, et cetera, don't allow any farm animals within city limits. Obviously, that's not what we're going towards, but how do we balance? So, I think what I, as I am reading everyone's body language, we need to revisit the drawing board, focused on the, for lack of a better term, the nuisance property aspect of folks with farm animals. So we will go back and try to redraft, and I probably will touch base with a couple of you as well, on if we did move forward, kinda try to do parallel, and then try to reconvene, and I'll can, talk to Mr. Baumann and, and Mr. Russell on if we do a committee of the whole to have discussion, or if we take it back to planning and zoning, and a, or just kind of bring back, like, hey, here are a couple of options, which direction do you want us to go with? But I understand planning and zoning doesn't wanna spend three months bashing their heads in on the topic if, if it's gonna come here and not go anywhere. So, does that sound like an appropriate avenue at this point in time?
Mayor, can we eliminate the word farm animal, and can we address it as?
I believe that's the legal terminology under zoning across the state of Ohio, just like the dogs at large is kind of standard language.
Your target is chickens, not, not pigs, cows, goats, as much?
Well, those are the ones we get most often complaints about, because they're most common in the community, but we have had issues with pigs, we have had issues with other animals. We had alpacas in somebody's backyard for a while, you know, that were causing problems.
There used to be a bear back in the day, too.
Yeah, there was a bear back, you know, and I lived on Center Street.
So that's what I mean, is there something, can we not, can you, can you cover the concerned basis to address issues as animals outside of the dog and cat world, I guess? I mean-
I'll consult with legal, but I believe it's standard language.
Mr. Palmer?
I don't know, I don't think we should be getting caught up in how many animals per so many square feet. I, I think that just makes things more difficult for the people that are doing it right. We need to focus on the negative impacts on the neighbors, the noises, you know, the smell, the health and safety. I think that's where the focus needs to be, instead of, hey, you can only have so many chickens per so many square feet. I, I think that'd be the way to go on that.
Remind everybody, this was a letter, right?
I understand. My, my, my problems with the format of the, what they put out. I think the focus is on the wrong thing.
That's the committee report. This is a letter.
I just wanted to say, like, what, what he focused on, for instance, I had a neighbor complaint, because somebody has several dogs, and they don't pick up after them, so people can't sit in their backyard when the wind's blowing the wrong direction. So it's not a farm, that's why I was trying to say, not a farm animal. Can you address the smell better, a noise better, without putting out the decibel machine to check the rooster to see how loud he is? Like, that, that won't get us anywhere, but, but the smell, the smell.
Okay.
One last comment. Again, that's, that's the challenge, right, is when we don't have a set parameter to at least work towards, that's where we get the back and forth. But I appreciate the feedback, and, and we'll keep chugging away, and see what creative ideas we can come up with.
Okay, letter to be filed.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Credonier regarding zoning code update, oop, wrong one, sorry, regarding zoning code updates, donation bins, length of construction, and conditional uses.
Letter to be filed. Committee reports.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to continue July 10th, 2025, discussions on parking standards, no recommendation given.
Do we have to do a motion, accept it?
So, this is a bone of contention between the law director and some of the committee chairs. Here's the thing, if it's a public meeting, and you sit there and have a public discussion about anything, even though no recommendation was given, you still had a meeting, right? And so, I, me personally, I feel that you should have to accept that committee report, even there's, even though there isn't a report, but you had a meeting. He feels, and I, I defer all this to him, as our law director, that you do not have to accept the committee report, but I just wanna go on the record on, 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 you know, just so everybody understands why we do it the way we're doing it. So, okay, next.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to continue July 10th, 2025, discussions on farm animals. We recommend advanced proposal with HRPC changes to full council for consideration, not in the form of legislation.
Mr. Russell?
Move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. DeArmitte, discussion. Ms. Warnicki?
So did we go away from having a committee of the whole, to just get a full thoughts on this?
Yeah, I, I think we were gonna get a lot more information, then come back with that, and then decide how that's gonna be distributed, and then, yeah. Okay? Oh, hang on, we had, all those in favor of the committee report say aye. Any opposed nay? Committee report is adopted.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to continue July 10th, 2025, discussions on length of construction rules. We recommend to adopt the proposed as presented.
Mr. Baumann?
Move for adoption.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion. Ms. Frishy?
This piece of legislation that's being proposed, I don't know, I mean, if somebody goes the length to get their permit, and wanna do things right, and something happens, whether it's termites, or somebody ends up with a injury, a terminal disease, something that postpones them, who are we to tell them, you have twelve months, ninety days, whatever it might be, to do your construction? I can't support that one either. I know you guys are trying to go after the property on Sandusky near the Courier, but this is not the way to go about it, I don't think.
Other discussion. Mr. Hellman?
If you have a better suggestion, what would it be?
Well, I think if we would've addressed the Sandusky property when they added a second story, and they didn't have permits, we wouldn't be here today on that one. So, I don't know what to tell you. Buy the property, I, I don't, somebody-
Or use your checkbook.
Not mine, but, I, I mean, and we always go off the grandfather clause, and we're not gonna grandfather it just so we can target it? Is that what we're doing?
Mayor?
They weren't grandfathering, right?
Mayor?
First of all, there are multiple properties throughout the entire community that sit and do not complete projects or finish their properties. That is, that is a very noticeable example, however, there's not targeting occurring. Also, as stated and discussed in the committee, if, if people are, just as we do with all other permits, if somebody comes in and has a reasonable reason that they haven't complied, and they need an extension, we're able to give extensions and work with them. But when somebody just decides, I'm only gonna put siding on half of my house, and it's gonna stay like that for thirty years, that's, that's a detriment to the neighborhood, and so we need to have a process. But, your comments are noted.
All those in favor of the committee report say aye. Any opposed nay?
Nay.
Committee report is adopted.
Sorry, making a note.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the proposed zoning permit and fee adjustments, no recommendation given.
Okay, next.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request from Service Safety Director Martin on behalf of the city of Findlay to rezone 401 North Main Street, parcel number 590000923010, and also 0 Cherry Street, parcel number 590001010264, from General Commercial C2 to Downtown Commercial C3. We recommend to approve as requested.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Move to accept the report.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Fr, Ms. Frishy?
So, again, I brought this up at the last council meeting, this is the old fire station. Council has not had an update discussion of all of our properties that we own. There's been no discussion, to my knowledge, about us selling it to the Port Authority or anybody else, and I think it's inappropriate to be rezoning at this time until there is full communication with council.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the committee report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Nay.
Yep, committee report is adopted.
Sorry, making a note. Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the amended zoning of 37.906 acres, currently situated in Allen Township, here and after referred to as the Keller Keller Cyphert Enterprises LLC at all annexation, that is currently in the process of being annexed into the city of Findlay, Ohio Limits. Parcel number 020001027753, to be C2 General Commercial. Parcel number 020001027752, 020001032372, and 020001018662, to be R1 Single Family Low Density. And parcel number 020001032373, to be CD Condominium. We recommend to approve as requested.
Mr. Baumann? Motion?
Was that a motion?
Oh, thank you. Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. All those in favor of, the committee report say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
It's just a committee report.
I'm sorry.
All in favor.
Had a little brain fart there for a second. All those in favor of the committee report say aye. Any opposed nay? Committee report is adopted.
Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the maintenance code, no recommendation given. Planning and zoning committee to whom is referred a request to discuss wooded lots, no recommendation given.
Okay. Legislation-
So excited. Sorry. Third reading for ordinance, or resolution 19, 2025. A resolution stating what services the city of Findlay, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the city of Findlay, Ohio, situated in Liberty Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being Lot 68 as platted in the Field Crest Second Edition, together with a part of the northeast quarter of Section 36, and part of the northwest quarter of Section 36, Township 1 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of .970 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Brandon Berry Annexation.
Mr. Palmer?
Move to approve Resolution Number 19-2025.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted.
Third reading for Resolution 20, 2025. A resolution stating what services the city of Findlay, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the city of Findlay, Ohio, situated in Cass Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the south half of Section 33, and part of the southwest quarter of Section 34, Township 2 North, Range 11 East, also situated in a part of Marion Township, being a part of the northwest quarter, part of the northeast quarter, and part of the southeast quarter of Section 4, and part of the northwest quarter, and part of the southwest quarter of Section 3, Township 1 North, Range 11 East. A tract of land consisting of 15.206 acres of land, totaling 12 total parcels, more or less, here and after referred to as the County Road 236 to 12 Intersection Annexation.
Mr. Greenham?
Uh, move for adoption of Resolution Number 020-2025.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Ms. Frishy?
Mayor, is this the property for Nick Reinhardt, or this is coming back when this doesn't have any plans for this site?
This is the roadway right-of-way, as we previously tried to annex, and the abutting property is necessary to do so.
So we got through that court case, so we're not gonna put the light in? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, we never had a court case, because the appeal was not filed in a timely manner. Therefore, we are having to resubmit, and hopefully, we'll get Commissioner's approval to annex. We have a, a traffic study that has been done, showing that no traffic signal is warranted there, and hopefully, that will be sufficient for the commercial commissioners to see that it would be more hazardous to put a traffic signal where it is unwarranted.
So the only way to do that is to annex it in?
Correct, because per the county engineer, the city is not allowed to do work on non-city roadways.
Other questions or comments? Those in favor of the ordinance, or the resolution say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
And Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Ordinances.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-88. An ordinance accepting and approving an application for annexation of territory situated in the township of Liberty, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 1 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of 7.883 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the North Town Condominium Villas Annexation.
Mr. Palmer?
Move to adopt ordinance Number 2025-88.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
And Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-89. An ordinance amending Chapter 1100 et sec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio, known as a zoning code, by zoning the following described parcels as CD condominium, here and after referred to as North Town Condominium Villas Annexation.
Mr. Palmer?
Move to adopt ordinance Number 2025-89.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-90. An ordinance accepting and approving an application for annexation of territory situated in the township of Liberty, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the northeast quarter of Section 36, Township 1 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of 9.166 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Greenbrier Holdings LTD and Mauer Rentals LLC, South Main Street, Annexation.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Move to adopt ordinance Number 2025-090.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-91. An ordinance amending Chapter 1100 et sec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio, known as a zoning code, by zoning the following described property as M2 Multi-Family High Density, here and after referred to as the Greenbrier Holdings LTD and Mauer Rentals LLC, South Main Street, Annexation.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Move to adopt ordinance 2025-091.
Second, Mr. Wobser, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye, if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmitte?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-92, as amended- Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-92 as amended. An ordinance amending Chapter 1100 et cetera of the codified ordinances of the City of Findlay, Ohio, known as a zoning code, by rezoning the following described property referred to as 2449 and 2453 Grace Boulevard Rezone, which previously was zoned R3 Single Family High Density Residential to M2 Multiple Family Residential District.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption of ordinance Number 2025-092.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-93 as amended. An ordinance amending a certain portion of a certain street, here and after referred to as the Westgate Drive Vacation in the City of Findlay, Ohio.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance Number 2025-93 as amended.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Ms. Frishy.
We had talked about this when it came up, the first ordinance, that the drainage is there from Tiffin Avenue, and if, and we've not in the past had private property with something like that, and I know we, have we looked into it any further? Can there be any issues down the road that's going to negatively impact Tiffin Avenue because it's now, we're vacating for them to-
Our roadway doesn't drain to that.
Say that again?
Our roadway doesn't drain to that, if that's what you're implying.
Well, I thought the Tiffin Avenue, many strips went back to, I thought that's what we just said, went tied to that, when we, what ties to it then?
So, I, I mean, I don't have any public, or we don't have any public utilities going into that. It's not platted as a detention pond or anything like that. Right now, it's a low area that they are running storm into. I can't tell you if it's downsides for one of their other properties or anything like that, but any effect to a roadway or anything like that, nothing runs in there from a public standpoint, so it's not going to affect any roadway. Now, if it's affecting their own property or their neighbor property, you know, that's kind of back, a civil back-to-back with each property owner, but anything, looking at you, public utility-wise, we don't have anything ran in there, and then looking at the original plat, it's not platted as a detention pond itself, because that was originally a roadway to run through there.
So, the properties, the businesses on Tiffin Avenue, there's no impact to retention with anything to that then? I thought that was part of the discussion, okay?
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance Number 2025-94. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contracts with option years for the purchase of materials, chemicals, and service agreements needed by the various departments of the City of Findlay, Ohio, commencing January 1st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption of ordinance Number 2025-094.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance Number 2025-98. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to apply for and execute the necessary grant applications and agreements to receive grant funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the construction of a new roundabout at the intersection of Lake Cascades and Western Avenue, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
If this is an application for a grant, I say move on, therefore, I make, make a recommendation that, or I motion that council's statutory rules be suspended in this ordinance to be given its third reading.
Second, Mr. Baumann. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Number 2025-98.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance Number 2025-98.
Second, Mr. DeArment, discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Um, remind me, this ordinance, how many dollars of general dollars are we going to use on this project?
Of general dollars?
Yeah, this was not, this was-
Or you mean local funds?
What?
General dollars or local funds?
Well, we're not getting ODOT.
Well, I mean, we'll be pulling from the general fund, be like capital fund, then you'll have water funds in it, you'll have sanitary, and you'll have storm funds.
Correct, so give me those numbers, what the total amount is.
So, right now, the rough estimate on it is like 1.4, so between all of the other ones, the sanitary, storm, water line, and the capital, that's all included in that. There's roughly $900,000 to $1 million on that. We're still got to work on final design and all that, there's just rough numbers on it. The 435,000 is going to be the OPWC funds that will go towards the project. So, out of the 1.4, 435 is covered through OPWC funds.
But OPWC funds, we get that every year, and remind me, what all can we use OPWC funds for in a calendar year, right? Isn't-
It's, yeah, for a calendar year, so we pretty much get it every year.
Like-
For that.
What do we use it for this year?
Uh, we use the, for two water lines in the past two years. We use it for sanitary lines, we use it for roadways before. Um, it all determines how it's used.
So, I guess my concern is, it, that roundabout does not seem warranted, since the traffic light was removed. Um, we could always put the traffic light back if people are concerned about things, and not be spending this money and appropriating that money someplace better used, um, within the community for 2026, right?
Seven.
It's 27. Um, and I know we've also talked about a roundabout for Bright and Sandusky, but that one's, that one's going to be covered without us having to put money in on that one?
So, the, if you look in the capital plan, what we have on that, we kind of are looking at using ODOT funds, um, for that. Um, that we looked at using ODOT funds for this, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a good project for ODOT fund usage, um, more of a, the Sandusky, because it's 568, Bright Road is major, two, two pretty good thoroughfares were there, where it's better used to use the ODOT funds that we use for resurfacing on that. Uh, the next couple of years, we have some bigger resurfacing projects, Lima Avenue, Blanchard Street, north of Tiffin Avenue, that we're going to be resurfacing, so we can't squeeze in Sandusky and Blanchard. So, that's part of the planning process, is how do we do some of these, you know, larger-scale projects, still get our resurfacing done at the same time, but able to improve some of these intersections that are not warranted for a traffic signal, but we can keep traffic flowing through those areas without the need of a signal.
Mr. DeArment.
The sightlines at this intersection is terrible. It's dangerous. So, are you confident that the, the circle will fix the sightline?
I, I mean, it eliminates your sightline, because it's moving your sightline into that, to a roundabout where you can see what your oncoming traffic is, because if you're traveling westbound on Lake Cascade right now, if you don't look at what is coming northbound on Western Avenue before that sign is there, and you don't, and you wait until you come up to the intersection, then you're looking back behind, trying to see what is coming. A lot of vehicles, you know, you go 35, 45 miles an hour down through there, they're coming at you at a pretty good speed where it's tough to make that. With the roundabout, you're putting everyone in a, it is closer, but how that is structured, you see what is coming, um, from your left, so that way you can make a decision on if you're going to go southbound or eastbound on that.
Mr. Wobser.
I was going to say, I go in through that intersection quite a bit, and it is exactly as described, Dan. It's, it's very dangerous, and I get nervous going through there because of the traffic coming down Western. Um, I think this is a good use of funds, it's a good place to put a roundabout, it's exactly what they were designed to do, to handle situations like that. He said what I was going to say.
Okay. Ms. Frishy.
So, I'm just going to reiterate that, um, we could always put the traffic light back in, we could remove that veering off onto Western. Um, we did not have big accident counts, I thought, when we discussed this, at that intersection, and I feel OPWC funds could be better used in other areas of our community.
All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance Number 2025-99. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio, to waive formal advertising and bidding requirements, and enter into contracts with Miller Brothers Construction and the Ohio Department of Transportation for roadway resurfacing of County Road 99 from Main Street to the CSX tracks, as part of the I-75 diverging Diamond Project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, uh, timing on this, is this something, are they ready to go? Do you need this now, or can it wait another, another two weeks?
Um, so, it can wait another two weeks, because the funds are actually tied to one, uh, to ordinance 101. Um, they are not going to be starting resurfacing until the, roughly the 26th, 27th of September, um, so it can go another reading, and we'll have plenty of time, plenty of time to get those contracts with them.
Second reading for ordinance Number 2025-100. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Jeremy, I believe, uh, in your, um, summary email this week, you mentioned that you desired this to, uh, get consideration tonight, and could you re, I, and I recall, we're, there was a couple of trucks on there, I don't recall why this one was a, a special case that wa, warranted consideration tonight.
Yeah, so, so these two vehicles, zoning department had a vehicle, and computer service had a vehicle, they were both damaged in that June windstorm. Right now, we have three departments, so in my department, we have minimum three people that are trying to use that vehicle. Zoning's using it daily, and computer service are using it, so we're trying to jockey around one vehicle, and when we have to go out to a job site, we got to wait an hour until it comes back. Um, so it's getting to a point where it's, it's getting pretty difficult to try to manage everything with the, with the projects that we have going on too, especially with my department. A lot of them, you know, we're coming down to the end where we're trying to be pushing on those. Um, so it would just, it would be easier for the three departments to get those. I mean, we got to, we got to get the vehicles anyways, um, just use capital funds now.
Mr. Wobser.
So, this was in our capital plan? No, it wasn't because of, we didn't know what was happening.
No, these weren't because they were, they were damaged totally.
So, just a regular car?
Uh, they're both CRVs, Honda CRVs.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Move that council statutory rules be suspended, and this ordinance be given its, uh, third reading.
Second, Mr. Hellman. I'm sorry, second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
And Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Number 2025-100.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
And Mr. DeArment?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-one. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to advertise for bids where required and enter into contracts for construction of various projects in accordance with the twenty twenty-five department equipment list appropriating and transferring funds for said capital, capital expenditures and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First re, or second reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-two. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-three. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into a contract for calendar years twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight with the Hancock County Public Defender Commission and the Hancock County Commissioners for a total of ninety-five thousand dollars per year for said calendar years and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-five. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
This is the airport master plan. And per our discussions earlier, I move, uh, that council statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. DeArment. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called. Those opposed name.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DeArment?
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this second and third reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-five. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-five.
Mr. Wobser?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. DeArment. Discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called. Those opposed name.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Ballman?
Aye.
Mr. DeArment?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Ordinance is approved.
First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-six. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-seven. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to waive formal advertising and bidding requirements and enter into contracts with Helms &amp; Son Excavating Incorporated for water line replacement along County Road two twelve, Township Road two thirty for Project Hat Trick, project number three five six three one five zero zero, appropriating and transferring funds thereto and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-eight. An ordinance amending section three fifty-one point one nine of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio entitled violation of individual parking space fines in all unmetered spaces, thus repealing ordinance number two thousand nine forty-two and all ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred-nine. An ordinance amending section three fifty-one point zero three of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio entitled prohibited standing parking space, thus repealing ordinance number, ordinance numbers nineteen ninety-eight sixteen and two thousand, twenty eighteen ninety-two and all ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. An ordinance amending section three zero three point nine nine of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio entitled general traffic code penalties, thus repealing ordinance number two thousand nine fifty-six and all, of, all ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. First reading.
Hang on. Let her take a breath here for a second. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, next.
First reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred eleven. An ordinance amending chapter eleven hundred et sec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as a zoning code by rezoning the following described properties referred to as four zero one North Main Street, parcel number five nine zero 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 nine two three zero one zero and zero Cherry Street, parcel number five nine zero 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 one zero one zero two six four, rezone, which previously were zoned general commercial C two to now be zoned downtown commercial C three. First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred twelve. An ordinance accepting and approving an application for annexation of territory situated in the township of Allen, county of Hancock, state of Ohio, and being a part of the west half of the southeast quarter of section thirty-five, township two north, range ten east, attractive land consisting, consisting of thirty-seven point nine zero six acres of land, more or less, hereafter referred to as the Keller Keller Cyphert Enterprises LLC at all annexation. First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred thirteen. An ordinance amending chapter eleven hundred et sec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as a zoning code by zoning the following described parcels as general commercial, R one, single family, low density, and C D condominium as outlined below. Said annexation is currently situated in Allen Township, county of Hancock, state of Ohio, consisting of thirty-seven point nine zero six acres, hereafter referred to as the Keller Keller Cyphert Enterprises LLC at all annexation. We're almost done. First reading for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred fourteen. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
All business. Ms. Frishy?
Um, I just wanted to follow up with the public from the, um, July fifteenth meeting was when we voted on, um, the additional appropriations for the downtown park, those two ordinances for three, three and a half million dollars. Um, on August seventh, I received a phone call from the EPA asking me to call them back. And I, and when I did, I asked what was up. And they told me they had received, um, multiple phone calls of, um, complaints, concerns about health, um, to both the local state and the federal EPA. And along with, um, phone calls had gone to King Environmental. And I said, okay, you know, what do you need from me? And they said that my name had come up a couple times that, um, I had, that I, that I knew where, um, the building went to. Now, I backed up the story to the gentleman, explained to him what research I had done regarding the Rainic site. And I, um, originally, before we had that ordinance, I went up and visited the EPA, was looking for some history on that property. They gave me a little information, wasn't a lot. Um, but there were citizens that had said that, um, that they thought the city in Findlay employees took the building down. And I did not think that was true. So I looked into it and I explained to him that I found out that the building went out for bid in twenty twenty-one, um, by the county. Um, the project said to remove the building, leave the concrete pad. Um, and it had just a little bit of asbestos on the site. A local contractor got it. They, um, did not have environmental. They subbed that part out. The asbestos was removed. It went to the proper site. And the building did, the structure did go to the Hancock County landfill. Um, I filled in a lot of holes, I guess, for the EPA when we had this conversation. Um, and they told me this was a very serious situation. I then said, do you want me to give you the information that I have? They said, would you? I said, of course. Um, and I emailed it. So that was all on August seventh. Um, after that, I did not get any follow-up regarding it until August fourteenth. And I got a call from a different department from the Ohio EPA, um, just wanting to let me know that there's nothing to see here. Everything is fine. I asked if everything was okay with the landfill, with the building going in there, since they did know hex availability cronium was very high. And we did a brownfield grant. They said everything was fine. They did not want to provide any records or anything. And so I just wanted to give the public that update because I don't know who you folks were that were filing complaints and how my name got in there. But, um, that is the information I have.
Mayor?
I appreciate you providing that update. I did receive communication from the Ohio EPA. And I'm glad you were able to get some clarification that the city did, that this project has been managed by the city and county appropriately throughout the entire process, as we've stated over the last three years multiple times. Um, we did follow up with them, um, and pretty much, you know, they, they were confused why people were stating so much misinformation and how they could clarify. Um, all of that to say that one of the things that came out of the discussion, which we were planning to do, um, but just was expedited is they have offered to provide us, uh, that they recommended working with them as technical assistants, uh, throughout the entire project process. We brought them up to date, um, on the project, what we've done to date, what the plan was. Um, and so don't be surprised when here in the next couple of weeks, you will probably see a request to formally apply for the grant through the Ohio EPA for them to provide technical assistance. And pretty much that just means that they're willing to check in each step of the way and say, yep, you're still doing it right, rather than waiting till the very end. So, um, just reiterate that we're doing everything properly and that we have a great team of people that know what they're doing. We take this very seriously and we'll continue to put safety first.
Mr. Wobser?
On other old business, I've got, uh, an update for council concerning the, uh, financial review situation that Councilman DeArment brought to the table some time ago. Um, we're continuing to move forward with having, putting together a process for that, a plan and a process, uh, discussions with the auditor and the administration. And we'll have that done by October meeting. But also wanted to let everybody know that, um, at the next meeting, I will have a, um, request for council to change our rules, to change the appropriations committee to a finance committee. And I'll go into that more, uh, in the, in two weeks from now. But it's actually changing it back to what it was to prior to the pre-Irri, uh, Mayor Irri era. And, uh, I think it would serve us well in this situation. And honestly, going forward, I think it's a good place for council to be. So just wanted to let everybody know that we are moving forward on that front.
Other old business, or Ms. Frishy?
Um, to follow up with the mayor's statement, nobody, there was no false info out there. People totally understand what the brownfield grant is and ha, and what it's cleaning to. The biggest concern for me that came out of that is that they are not investigating, um, the building that's gone into the county landfill. Um, and people are just wanting the site at the park completely cleaned. And they did say that they're gonna do one blanket, um, of all nineteen acres when they are done with the next brownfield, um, to give everything a clean bill of health. I'm not sure how that works, but that's what they said. So there was no false information.
Ms., Mr. Stachak?
Different note, old business have been keeping you up to date. And, uh, got some numbers today from the income tax department. We continue to fall behind on the projections. It's averaging in excess of about two hundred thousand dollars a month. That's an average. That's not an actual per month. But it's, it's, uh, about one point eight million dollars that we're behind off of the projection, rolling into what I told you was the one that I'm most worried about, which was the business income tax projection at the six million. And there's a high likelihood and income taxes rounded down their projection significantly down close to four million than six. But right now, you're looking at coming in this year, three to five or more millions below the projection at the beginning of the year. So keep that in mind as we continue to move forward.
Other old business, Mayor?
Um, yes, we continue to watch the income tax. And, um, again, on the environmental, they don't have anything to look into because we did the proper process. Um, and you had stated multiple times accusing us of putting it in the wrong spot. So that's fine. Anyway, um, I do want to get a shout out to Officer Brian Andrews, who this weekend, um, during his patrols noticed some smoke coming out from behind a house, um, and went up to the door and opened, was able to wake up the family and get them out of the house. Um, uh, it's my understanding that a hot tub had started a fire on their back porch. And had they not been able to put it out as quickly, the homeowner was able to go out and, and put a hose on it and the fire department was able to respond, that it could have been a bad situation. So I just want to give our officer a shout out when they are doing their patrols and driving through the neighborhoods. I know we don't always see them, but they are there. Um, and they do a wonderful job and, and pay attention to keep our community safe. So appreciate Officer Andrews. And then I also want to give a shout out to Further Bikes, GT Wheels, the University of Findlay, Officer Brian White, and Officer Doug Marshall, who, um, worked to get together bikes from our, that had been released from evidence, tuned up and donated to Findlay High School students that were in need of them. Obviously, it's a bad situation with busing not being available. So we've been trying to work with the schools, um, however we can to support them. So we were able to donate, I believe, thirteen bikes, um, to students who had requested them. And I know I've had a couple other folks. If you have a bike sitting around that may need, uh, a second home, I am sure that there are people in need that would really appreciate that. So, uh, I think that those were the, the couple of items I wanted to hit on. Thank you all.
Mr. Wobser?
Since the mayor was talking about public employees and how great job they're doing, I'll just, um, add on to that. The, I want to thank the crew that took care of Riverside Park Pool and the park itself this summer. Those guys did a super job. We had a, um, great summer out at the pool. And I only say that because I was there a lot, um, with the YMCA swim team. And the YMCA also did a great job of running that pool, uh, for a facility that's as old as it is, um, that continues to run well, as well as it can, given the situation that we've got. And keep your fingers crossed that through the winter, nothing breaks and we open it back up next, uh, spring. But those guys did a super, super job. And, um, there were, I think we're gonna have close to a, a record year out there as far as attendance goes. Uh, so a lot of people took advantage of it this year. Um, so it was really great. So thanks to those guys.
Any more old business? Uh, new business? I apologize for making a mistake earlier. I'm just feeling a little bird brain tonight. Okay. Mr. Stachak?
Definitely got it. Yeah. Um, I passed out earlier, uh, proposed budget schedule. Wanted to verify with council that, uh, a pre-budget meeting on, uh, the seventh, October at five o'clock will work for you folks. I also did pass it out to, uh, a number of the folks who are here that I know are likely to be on council next year. If I missed anyone or if you guys know of somebody who should get the schedule, I have a few extra copies for them. But is there any issues with it being before that meeting? Great?
Other new business. Ms. Frishy?
On another note, um, serious note, August eighth, I texted with the mayor that the Fostoria Mayor, City Council had a discussion. They were applying for some key FOST grants. And through that discussion, it came up that, um, they referenced surrounding communities not having healthy, safe water as well. Um, so I messaged the mayor on that. She wasn't aware of that. Um, and I know that she has since met with both the Tiffin Mayor and Fostoria Mayor. But I wanted to just share, they referenced a website, E as in elephant, W as in William, G as in good, dot org. Um, and you can type, you can go and look at your water, type in your zip code anywhere in the United States. And they look at the health safety. So first of all, we're, our water's fine. We're passing the rule, we're passing the requirements of the EPA. This is, um, some items that don't, are not regulated by the EPA that are in our water. Um, and what came of that, when I looked at it, um, I saw that we actually have hex availability cronium in our water, which me being so tied in and focused on the Rainic property, that was concerning to me. Um, I then went and had some good conversations with Jason over at the water department. We looked to see where those water tests were done. It was two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Um, we tested at the plant and we tested at Market Street and Van Buren, where they reported those numbers to the EPA. Um, we have not tested for hex availability cronium since then. And I asked Jason what that would cost. He said it's a hundred dollars per test. I asked him what the protocol is, if I can request that, or if there's something we need to go through chain of command. I have not heard back. So I guess I'm asking council, um, just to update those numbers for the public since hex availability cronium is, um, on people's plates of discussion lately. Um, if we need two members of council to request it, I don't know. Or if the mayor has already approved that to be done, and I just haven't heard. So I don't know what you need, Mayor.
I was aware that you showed up to the water treatment plant and cornered an employee and, and in the future.
Did not, did not change your language. We had a good hour and a half conversation. Well, don't disrespect me when she makes her comment.
If you would like to set up, moving forward, if you would like to sit down with employees, it would be more appropriate to reach out to them and schedule time rather than showing up and talking to employees who are unprepared to answer your questions. Yes, I am aware that Jason Phillips then sat down and spent an extensive amount of time.
Took away from his time.
In a short, what I will say, say very briefly, because these are extremely complex systems that our team is managing to keep our community safe. That test is unnecessary.
That test could be helpful to the public since it's in the system.
Long story short, I'm, I will be willing to sit down with you and discuss this further, but that is unnecessary. And as he educated you, our water is safe. We don't need to test that. And I'm not going to try to distill an hour and a half conversation, education on the chemistry and management of our water treatment plant and water pollution control facility.
My question to you is what's the process to be able to have that test done, Mayor? Do you need more than one member of council to ask for it?
Yes, if you guys want to appropriate money to run a test that is unnecessary.
A hundred dollars, a hundred dollars per test. If it's good for the public, for peace of mind.
I, I would refer that to appropriations committee if you're looking for money to be spent. There you go.
Well, there could be two members of council that request.
Um, I would, I would like to call a planning and zoning committee meeting, um, on September eighteenth. Um, we will be meeting at ten thirty, uh, here in council chambers.
The only thing I would mention, are you able to move it back a bit? Because I think we're gonna end up having planning and zoning at nine. Now, at this point in time, I don't think we have a ton.
Yeah, Matt's on board.
Okay, okay. You guys are good with that. Very good.
I have a schedule conflict that day.
Hearing nothing new, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Palmer, second, Mr. Ballman. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned.